I am called to order meeting number 1,603 of the Southern Berkshire Regional School District's School Committee on September 26th at 6:08. Okay, I have requested, I think it's appropriate, we would like to change the agenda that needs an amendment, someone to amend the agenda. The amendment would be for us to have our guests from Transend speak first, not wait until the unfinished business, and to then have the student spotlight, so to do all of that first. Is there anything else that we need to adjust?
Nope, I think we can do that.
Okay, so I'll take a motion to that effect.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, alright, and thank you very much Nancy and Orin. So shall we begin with Transend?
Do we have to vote?
We have to vote.
Yep.
I just assumed. Alright Nancy. Kyle.
Yes.
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 Okay.
Kim.
And, oh, Kim. And you're hoping you're feeling better. Alright, so it's unanimous, we made that change.
Wonderful, so I would love to introduce Holly Riordan and Nick Namba, who are our Transend partners for this year, and they're going to talk about, they're here for their site visit today and tomorrow. So I'm gonna let them do their introduction and, oh, do you have the...
I'm gonna send them to America.
Okay.
I have science papers.
No, that's my fault, I should've checked.
We'll send it, I saw it.
I'm good at stealth tactics.
Yeah, do it.
He dances.
Oh.
If you're under the mic.
Talk at the mic.
Please, that's not a problem.
Can you hear me?
No.
No.
No, is it on?
Oh, it's just for you.
Speak to the owl.
Alright.
Speak to the owl.
Thank you all for having us here tonight. Thank you for making some adjustments so that we could start. I am driving to Hartford right after this to get on a plane. So Holly's gonna stay and stay a little bit more tomorrow. You might be asking yourself who these people are and where did Taina and Martha go, which is totally a normal question. And we would say where you were doing work last year was early, early-stage exploration, trying to figure out what is it that you wanted to do? What are you excited about? What are you passionate about here in your system? And when that phase ends and moves over towards making a selection like Burke Studios, then we commit. So we're more heavily focused on deep implementation and helping people do the iteration that needs to happen once they actually identify what they want to focus on. And so because Burke Studios has been identified, then Holly and I jump in. And don't worry, Taina will be back, everybody loves Taina now. So she'll be back to say hi, she lives a lot closer than I do. I live in LA, so this was a trek to get here. But I wanted to come and see your students and talk to them today. I wanted to see all of you get a chance to say hello, which did not disappoint in the slightest bit. And we'll talk a little bit about that today, too. You know, really need to see our pictures, but there we are, we're also here. If, we can go to slide number two. You know a little bit about Transend already, and our impact and why I'm here is because we get to help impact kids' lives. We believe that everybody will get an opportunity to go on a design journey to betterment their school or system. That's not a judgment on old past versions of schools and systems. I come from educators. My parents, my mother is a teacher, my dad was a principal for 30 years, and so I don't bash on old ways of school. But I think that we have a whole lot to learn and keep learning forward, and that it should never be about us and it should be about our kids. And so that's what we believe at Transend, and that's why we center in every single community and what the community is telling us that they're looking for, for their students. That is what we do at Transend, and our goal is to make sure that we're able to do that with as many people as we possibly can. You can go to the third slide. You're gonna, are you gonna, you're gonna go through the goals in a second. What we wanted to talk a little bit, go ahead and click through the animations, nobody needs to see all those. We want to make sure that something that's really clear and why Transend is different. So I was a school and district administrator for many years, and something that always bothered me was when somebody came in and did something to us, which was pretty much all the time. And so why I put this back up here is to help us all remember and to hold us accountable for the fact that this is your community's design. That's what we're here to implement. We aren't here bringing you a package set of anything. Literally, everything is being customized and tweaked every moment of every day, every hour, every word that a student or an educator says. It changes the design to be more of what you all need. That is the community-based design process that's down in the corner. And then we go through this learn and vision build try process over and over and over again to an irritating rate sometimes, because it's never-ending. And so what we like to say is like, we are going to disappear at some point, because you all will be sustaining this work without us. But you should still be continuing that cycle, because every year that passes, the context of the world changes around us, which means you've got a chance to bring more relevance to the kids that happen to be in those seats today than there was yesterday. So that's the learn and vision build try. And then together, that means what we have is an ongoing dialogue, build and communication that is purposeful for your kids and your community in your context. And if it's not, then we know how to tweak that, and eventually you will know how to do that absent of us. So we are, again, I am, I consider it a privilege to be here to talk to the students today, to walk around the site and the campus. These are the best days for me, when I get to come back and be with kids and talk to kids. We got to record some of them today, you'll hear some of that later on. But thank you for having us and hosting us and letting us do this super-important work with you. I'm gonna toss it to Holly, who's gonna talk to you a little bit more specifically about this year.
Absolutely, so as Nick mentioned, last year, when you started this journey, it was really about envisioning and dreaming and thinking about, how did we make these shifts for our community to really grow our approaches to learning in a way that helps our children and our learners to flourish? And so this year, as we moved into implementation, we've had to set some goals, and we can go to the next slide, that we're really gonna keep trying, and we're gonna learn from each of the things that we try, to really go back and keep editing our design process. And so we're gonna do that in several ways. And three main ways that we're gonna do that this year together are, we're gonna join forces with Building 21. They're one of our co-partners that we worked with today, in fact, on the Professional Development Day, to really build the necessary skills and knowledge, the technical skills we need in order to actually implement studios. So today, we were working together to think about what authentic products could look like for a studio. And so the teachers were thinking and planning about, what might students participate in when they join into our studios? Here in the building studio we're implementing now, and in the ones that we implement in the future. The next goal that we have is really to use that design process that we showed you to think about the structures and the tools that are gonna really increase that relevance and empower students to have ownership of their own learning. And we already saw that today, as Nick mentioned, when we spoke to your students. Luckily, we had a camera to video it, because we were already blown away with, they've been in the studio for a month already, and the way that they were able to articulate how those approaches to learning have already started to develop their mindsets of things like how important perseverance is, how important it is to like, figure out what to do when you don't know what to do, and the changing role of the teacher and the changing role of the learner. We're already seeing that start to come out just within a month. So we want to really be able to harness what we're learning from this experience to really impact each of the studios as we continue and design those experiences. And then the last goal we have is back to that idea that Nick shared with us about the community journey, right? So we want to make sure that we are thinking about our processes to continue to engage the community in this process, to make sure that each of the moves we make in our design are really owned by and really contribute to the vision that the community has for studios and for the learning that students are doing. So these are the three areas that we're gonna be digging in together as partners to really implement this at school this year.
We also wanted to leave time just to answer any, uh, any questions, I'm just kidding. Any questions that anybody might have for clarity.
I just have one in terms of, when you use the word "community", are you speaking of our five towns or the school community? That's being just campuses?
No, the goal is to involve the community in the same way that it was during the envisioning process, so that, because in all honesty, with something like Burke Studios, you're going to have to count on the greater communities to be able to give voice and the partnerships that we need to actually create the Burke Studios in the way that you all are envisioning them. And so, yes, internally, but also, yes, externally, there's gonna have to be quite a considerate effort made with the communities outside the school.
Yes, Nancy.
What are some ways, I mean, we've, obviously, a lot of work has been put in so far to the Transend process, and there's a lot of, there's a lot of understanding, you know, a lot of people know what's going on, but it's not across all boards within the five towns. What are some ways that you, you look at integrating people who don't necessarily always pay too much attention to what's going on in the district, so that they know that they can at least offer their skills if nothing else? Never mind, never mind the idea, but, you know, sort of integrate, especially for things like the internet.
Yeah, a strong communication plan, period, is really essential. And that's whether, whether we're talking about Burke Studios or whether we're talking about anything else in school systems.
Right.
Generally, there's a population that wants to pay attention, and there's a population that just doesn't know and is okay with it. Our ambition is to ensure that by getting increased ownership by all the communities around us, there will be not only increased interests, but also increased engagement.
That's what I'm asking about, right?
Yeah, so part of the process is going to be, you know, right now, we're so early on in this process, like we said, it's been a month that we've been implementing things. And like Holly said, honestly, I, I said this morning, if, if learners just had a month, and if they were articulating the way the learners that we spoke to this morning were, and I would just make sure everybody gets at least a month for the Burke Studios at this place, because their articulation of what their experience is so remarkable, getting those words out to the general public is gonna be super-important. Ensuring that there's a process that's included in the, what is the studio? What else do you need from the community is also gonna be very important. As we've seen in other places that we've done this, everything can't be on the principal at the high school to find other partners to do this work. There's just a couple things to be done for that guy. And so it's, he's not, he's not the sole person responsible. And the reality is like, the lessons we heard from the kids today are exactly what we're going for. It shouldn't be on any adult, in all honesty. Like, they should have the skill sets, if we do this right, to be able to go to the community and ask them appropriately, not alone or anything like that. But literally to have in the process, go to the community, follow up with questions. Lots of times, especially these days, you're all local, so it can be local, but sometimes local's impossible in the middle of the day. So we do virtual calls with different partnerships and people in the organization. It also might open up opportunities outside of just this local area, where there could be partnerships that happen. And partnerships don't always have to mean physical partnerships. They can mean things that are across the country. And so there's no limitations to, I think, structures we can build. But it's more so and probably most so important that these are driven by the kids and that they're owning those in the process, yeah.
I think one of the additional factors is you're really concentrating on creating lifelong learners. So you learn how to do this, maybe it's in shaping a building, but then you're able to apply those skills. I'm gonna put him on the spot, we have our videographer. Do you want to repeat what you said about the library experience? Because I thought this was perfect.
Oh, well, I feel like after, do you need the mic? No, it's the mic. I feel like after the library got beat down, I've seen a lot more kids use it, and I've used it a lot more as well, so it's, it's just way more welcoming and it's nicer.
But go back to what you said, how this came to be.
Oh, well, we were part of the student, we were superintendent advisory council, and we all had a chat with the librarian, and we all kind of had the idea, and we, we got it done, and it was nice, so.
Have you checked out the, the little kid's new playground?
Not yet, no.
In process, in process. We said that this morning, we said in reality, it's about knowing how to learn, right?
Yes, exactly.
So that when you face a problem, or when you face learning something in university or on a job, right, then you have a process that you can rely on to figure things out and to make choices and to redirect yourself when you make your own path, right? And so we're saying, in fact, students here have been doing these things for quite some time, like the pick committee, the playground improvement committee, and then the library group. They're finding real problems and issues within their community that they want to solve, and they are now having structures within the school day to think about that and to make changes happen.
And to have your framework to, to work with. So some of it is serendipitous, because Beth is that kind of leader. So she understands thinking outside of, of the, of the school day, but the fact of starting these councils and then they're bringing, and, and putting, you said that this library, you see the difference in the use every day compared to last year.
Yeah, 100%. Well, to have some of the learners even articulating today the difference, and it's not a judgment on the way school is or the way school has been in the past, it is the opportunity that they feel like they're getting during studios right now, to learn in a different way, to experience life in a different way. You know, the opportunity to not learn, this is how I need to do school. There are some ways in which school needs to be done so that they can formally succeed, but there's also ways that schools never have the structure to be able to provide an opportunity to experience. That means like, what if I didn't come in and I didn't tell you what to do today? I'm not gonna do it. What would you do? And how about we don't, for the first time after they graduate, not making that be the first time they're having to answer that question for themselves?
Exactly.
We're, we're doing work all the way down with kindergartners across the country, where it's like, how do you build skills in five to eight-year-olds? So that by the time they get to high school, they don't just, they're not just not waiting for you to ask, their expectation is that you give them agency to be able to do this type of work. So this is just the beginning of the boundaries that lets you all really tumble down and say like, yeah, if, if an adult wasn't in here, it'd actually be okay. I have stuff to do today, I'm gonna do my stuff. If you have an idea, great, let's think about that. But just because you're an adult and you bring that idea to me, that doesn't necessarily mean I'm gonna take it, because I'm gonna tell you the five other pieces of context I use to make this decision. It's those types of learning moments that feel a little threatening as a previous educator myself, but also incredibly motivating to see young kids being able to articulate like that.
One of the most beautiful moments today that happened with the students was one of the gals was saying, we were saying, what's different about the way that you show up as a learner or the way that your teacher shows up to class? And he said, referring to Mr. Hamel's teacher, and he said, you know, with him now, it's kind of like a bowling alley. I still want to get the pins, but he's just the bumper to make sure we don't get stuck in the gutter. And we were like, yes!
Do you have major corporate partners?
Yes. Corporate? Not as many corporate partners as much as philanthropists and funders that donate to us so that we can do great causes and not cost as much for school systems across this country.
Yes, I'm just thinking the times I worked with the foundations of, to American Express and Citigroup, and it was, you're not teaching them how to think. And they changed their, you know, most of these companies have changed even the way you would go to work. And this is answering what they've been telling us we didn't do.
Absolutely. And as Nick was saying, you think a lot about that gradual release of responsibility, right? So we're starting now in the high school, where, your students articulated really well today, we're gonna be going to college, or we're gonna be finished with school in a year from now. And we're really glad, this isn't the first time we're having to make choices and figure this stuff out on our own. And so it's that idea of, how can we start to give them that opportunity with the bumpers and the guardrails to being able to make these, these choices and these decisions? And this learning process is something that they own. So it's really exciting.
And I would be remiss to say like, it's gonna be this smooth the entire time. Like, don't, please, don't, I don't want to make it feel like we're not gonna have bumps on the road. There'll be partners that fall through. There'll be people that promise and then don't show up. We, we will be there, right, right along the side while all those things happen. But I think that's also part of the conversation that gets to take place with learners. Number one, less of that happens when learners are involved, by the way. Like, people don't want to not show up when they made a commitment to kids. It will still happen for some people, but it's also really important for the learners to realize and experience. Just because an organization says they're ready to do a thing, that doesn't always mean they're actually ready to do a thing. That also doesn't mean that we stop. We find the next organization that's willing to do that thing and we persevere. So these are all the opportunities of like, life that are gonna come our way. And I think there's a lot more learning that we have to go. But like I said before, this is a month into what could be here. We are, you know, I have already said, I think that this system is ready to fast-track to an example for lots of people across this country to be able to see what's possible with kids.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much. Any...
Okay.
I have a question.
I'm sorry.
Actually, it's for yours. How many children do we have participating in this?
So right now, in the studio, Mr. Hamel's doing, we have seven. In the actual studio, construction, design, building. We have classes doing what we would refer to as sort of mini pilots in the middle school. And actually, today in our meeting, we've had a couple of high school teachers who have now said that they're gonna take the PD pathway for the year of studio and incorporate some of the experiences in their classes. We have a second studio we're hoping to run in the spring with some students. It's hard for me to give you the number of who will be in there, because we open up the ad drop period again in the second semester. So some of the kids may stay and some may get out. We're offering Mr. Hamel's studio experience again during different days in the second half of the year, with the hope that we might be able to eventually make that part of our early college experience. And I couldn't tell you right now how many of the seven are definitely committed to being in there. I know that many of them have had a good experience, so I assume some will stay. It's your turn.
That's my answer, we can't...
No, there were fifty, talk guys, there was like five of us, I can be for sure.
Yeah, that are definitely...
I mean, a lot of them are early. So, you know, school's only so many hours in a day, so we have a lot of kids who are weighing like, what they were thinking about taking in the second semester. And so for some kids, it's a hard choice, like, based on what classes are there. But I trust your judgment there, friend, if she says five are saying they're committed. And then we're gonna open it up, and other kids may want to jump on in, in that one. I think the whole thing for, for all of this is just the idea of providing the experience. And similar to when we started in early college, you know, just really excited that there's kids who want to be part of it, and we think it'll grow as we go. And the hope in middle school is to give the kids the experience so that are ready, they've done some of this with the identifying a problem and going through all the steps of some of it, so that when they get to high school, taking it as a full class or half the year, or maybe both halves of the year, you know, they feel prepared and excited to do it, so. I'm really, really happy with where we are right now in this process. And if you would've asked me last year when we went through this, our original work with Transend, I would've been reluctant to say that we'd be where we are right now. But it's a credit to, to Mr. Hamel, it's a credit to the kids who are in the class. And really a credit to everybody who wants to get involved, because our, our small group of Transend last year, we doubled it with today's PD. So it's, it's good to see there's a lot of people interested in the philosophies that studio has to offer, so.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
We look forward to your coming back.
Yes. I'll be back in November, for sure, so, yeah.
Thank you all for the time.
Thank you.
Safe travels.
Easy trip back to LA.
There is no easy trip.
Since we moved the site, are we, do you want to do early college?
Well, why don't we do science and then do Lindy if you want? Or you want to do Lindy now?
Science, let's see.
So you want to finish this whole line? So Lindy, Lindy can come do early college and innovation pathways.
Okay.
She's here, if you want, and then we can go to...
Student report.
Yeah, the student spotlight. Lindy, is that okay with you?
Yeah, that's fine.
Wonderful. Wonderful.
Can I sit in one of these over here?
Sure.
I can arrange that.
Good evening. So, start with early college. Early college, Simon's Rock hosted an early college conference last week. And that was in partnership with the Mass Alliance for Early College. They're a separate advocacy organization that we have partnered with, we're a member of the alliance. And we had an incredible event. It was pretty much kicked off with our students, a student panel, which was easily the highlight, I would say, of the event. Our students shared their perspective of the early college program. They're both active participants in college credit classes. And I think their, their way of understanding the program is really important to hear about. They also represented, I think, some, some populations, you know, based on where their families are coming from or their, their preconceived notions of college. They were representing really important perspectives of people who maybe originally thought they couldn't go to college and found out they could. So, not to, not to, I'll have them, I'll have them share their story with you personally. I was on a separate panel with Ken Knox, the program coordinator on the Simon's Rock side, and that was moderated by the executive director of the Mass Alliance for Early College. And I think it became really clear, when we were highlighting our program, just how unique our implementation is. So we're one of only four programs where all of the students are trying out college credit classes when they're in high school. And I think there was a lot of interest in how, we've been so successful so quickly, to be honest with you. It was, it was a really nice response. So, last, last piece of that event was one of our faculty members, Kevin Mogomuth, helped lead a workshop on instructional strategies to support early college learners struggling with executive function. And he did a great job sharing some of his lesson plans and strategies with other early college teachers from across the state. So that conference was attended by, you know, I think it was over 50 guests, and some of, you know, a lot of them were coming from far, you know, across the state of Massachusetts. So that was a really, it was neat to be able to speak with people in person and let share, share best practices. Okay, also, I'm in the process of applying for our fiscal year '25 early college support grant, which officially became available last week. That's a $75,000 grant. Any questions about early college?
Any feedback that you've had from any of our students who've graduated in terms of impact of early college experience, et cetera?
Yeah, so it always, it's, comes in when I don't expect it. I've, I've followed up with a few of our students formally, but, yeah, I can think of a few who were telling me they were really excited that, it looks like they can graduate from college a year earlier than the rest of their, you know, peers entering college the same year as them. Some folks were really grateful for the experience they had in the program, because they decided, they knew early on that they wanted to switch their major or identify a major that they wouldn't have known about without the college program.
That's cool.
I spoke to one student who decided not to go to college, and he was saying that he's now reconsidering taking a couple of classes and is less intimidated by that idea. So, yeah, is that, is that enough examples? I feel like we very much intend to formally survey, but, you know, there's, it's a bit of a challenge to get 19-year-olds to respond.
Really?
So I'm thinking of like, different incentives for that. In the drawing for some sort of prize.
About 66-year-olds.
I wouldn't know anything about that.
But yeah, I think, I think I'm also considering just checking to see if their, their parents would give us an update about where they're at or if they have anything to share.
If their kids have gone to college.
Yeah. Yeah. So Innovation Career Pathways is our other high-quality college career program. And right now, in the process of working on our self-reflection, so last year was our first year of that program. And the self-reflection is essentially a report of how it was last year. And based on the questions for, for, you know, the self-reflection, the one year of self-reflection, I should say, it seems like we're doing really well. A lot of programs do not have active participants in their first year, and a lot of programs are, you know, still struggling to hire technical professionals or find industry professionals and essentially get the program off the ground. So we had a really successful first year. We had students participate. We already had high-quality technical courses to offer. And with our early college program, we have those advanced courses that students have so they can meet the pathway criteria. So it's looking like we're, yeah, we're off and running. I don't know if it was already mentioned at an earlier meeting, but we're pursuing new, new pathways. We might specify our information pathway to an information technology pathway and pursue the new clean energy pathway.
So Chris, do you wanna add anything to that?
Nope. She did time, she did great.
We really appreciated it.
One last thing. Our, our college and career readiness team had its first meeting of the year on Monday. That's a, that's a team that was based on MYCAT, which is My Career and Academic Plan Framework. And now we meet at least four times a year, if not more, to work on college and career readiness initiatives and activities for our students. New this year is we're planning an industry professional residency series, so we're inviting industry professionals from in-demand fields to share their work and career journey with groups of students. And our first presenter will be an engineer from the energy sector who is also a Mount Everett alum. Dandrick.
Oh.
So he knows a lot about energy production, he has an engineering degree, and he, you know, I think, I think he'd have a lot of great career advice and tips to share with students who can't really imagine how they get from Mount Everett to, you know, five steps ahead, so. Okay, thank you for the time tonight.
Any, any questions? Thank you so much.
Excited? Oh, for the innovation pathways program? Yeah, I have to say, as program coordinator, I think it's the most fun to be at the start of a program that actually works out and is up and running now. I think we're still very much in what I would call the implementation phase of both programs. It's really early on and cultural shifts take time, but I think there's going to just be, based on what I can tell, there's a lot of pressure for school systems to adapt to, you know, the changing workplace and the changing nature of the world. And I think these programs are, are getting us headed in a really good direction that I feel, I feel good about. I'm excited about, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I understand we have someone with a student spotlight.
We do. Mr. Miller, do you wanna introduce it or do you?
Yeah.
Wonderful, that'd be wonderful. I love this.
Walking into a classroom filled with kindergartners, knowing that the teacher's not gonna show up.
Yeah, yeah.
To figure out what to do. For excitement. But I do have a curriculum leader and terrific and wonderful teacher, Miss Jane Scher, who has been a huge advocate for our new science position. And she's gonna speak a little bit about some video and footage we're sharing of students experiencing this new class, as well as talking about how it's relevant to their learning. Is there anything else you wanna add?
Sure. So I'm gonna preface by, a few years back, I was part of the Flying Cloud, had an initiative where it was week-long courses where I got to take for about productive talk. And it was a wonderful experience, and it taught us all these great best practices in teaching science and having students, I was watching the Transend stuff going, yes, student-led learning, like about them kind of coming up with their own ideas and having all this exploration time. And I wanted so much to say that I was really successful at bringing that right into my classroom, but the reality is it takes a lot of prep work. We are under a lot of pressure with math, with reading as well. And this new position has completely opened a door that was not always able to be opened, I guess would be the right way I would look at it. My kids, I'm watching my students twice a week be engaged, be exploring, be coming up with their own creative ideas, really learning the scientific process. They're excited. I'm excited. I get to be there, I'm co-teaching with Claudine, she's fabulous. So it's been just this really powerful shift that for the first time in probably my whole career, and I've been teaching a really long time, I feel really successful at teaching science. And I feel like my students are learning it the way I've always wanted them to, to learn it. It's not rushed, it's not squished between, you know, a hundred different things. It's lovely. So I'm really excited, I mean, we've only been in it for three weeks, and my students, actually I've been asking them, how do you like it? How do you feel about it? And a couple of the, the other teachers have also been sharing how wonderful it is. It just took the burden of all the prep off of us. And, you know, we, we often as teachers feel like we're always handed something new, something new, something new. And this is the first time somebody said, let me help you with this. And it actually really has a huge, powerful impact, in my opinion. So I don't know about that.
The enthusiasm is quite clear there.
All right. What?
Yeah, I just wanna mention one thing that Ms. Mallory, although she couldn't be here tonight, wanted me to mention in her own words, and you don't have to scroll back a few pictures, but previously there was a picture of a girl discovering what salt crystals looked like under a microscope for the first time. And the enthusiasm and excitement on her face in trying to share what she's discovered with her classmates is exactly why this is so important and valuable and why we wanted to move to the shift of making science more hands-on, more project-based, and more equipment. Just saying that on behalf of Ms. Mallory.
Thank you.
Please, for some interviews you had?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, so, if you're, some of the stuff we've done in science this year is we've done a couple experiments, real testable experiments. The first one we did was a paper airplane project where we saw which type of paper could go the farthest, cardstock paper, construction paper, or printed paper.
My name is Sylvia, and in science, we've done chocolate experiment where we did, we timed how long it would take to melt chocolate in your mouth. Whether you're chewing, stirring in your mouth, or no movement. And we graphed it with a partner. So we did truly first, and it took faster than most of them. And then we did stirring, which it actually took longer than we thought. And then we did no movement, which took even longer. My name is Logan, I see, and I do science class, we be in fourth grade, and I have been doing it this year. Mainly, well, mainly how, how much water droplets can be on a coral? A nickel, a dime. So fun, it's so fun to learn. What interested me is that almost all of us in the group's got most, um, honey, I was surprised by that.
Hi, I'm Fiona, I'm in fifth grade, and something that we were doing in science is we had these Q-tips, we had a cup of water, and we did the Q-tips in the water, and then we rolled them in sugar, and we were tasting, testing different spots on our tongue that tasted sweet the most. So we took the Q-tips and we put them on different spots of our tongue, we put them on the sides of our tongue, the middle of our tongue, the tips of our tongue, and the back of our tongue. And then we wrote it down on a piece of paper, and we were gonna see if our hypothesis was right. So first, actually, we wrote a hypothesis to seeing like which one we thought would taste the most sweet. And then we graphed after we wrote down the things after we tasted. And we graphed it, and then we saw which one tasted the most sweet, and then we wrote a conclusion about that.
And I just wanted to add one more thing. You heard of graphing come up a few times as the math curriculum leader. I love the fact that we're graphing in science. There's also, we did averages with the paper airplane. They had to measure with a meter stick and do the averages. It's just lovely, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I think, I think one thing that you mentioned in the curriculum meeting the other day, I think the thing that struck me as the most, most compelling thing about the addition of the science instructor, the additional experiment, was all the ideas that you've had that you couldn't do because of time. And that to be able to share those ideas and see...
The fruit of what you want, what you liked to, what you told for your kids, for you as a teacher, was as, almost sounded almost as important as it, as for what the kids got.
Absolutely. I think, you know, I, I think I said this in Beth's office the other day, best practice is only best practice if it's sustainable. And it's really hard to sometimes do all the great best practices with our time constraint of only six and a half hours with the kids. And this is something that has shifted my own life in a really good way. Like I feel very happy about it. Several other teachers I've spoken to also feel the same way. I feel like the general representation is that it's going really well, and I just hope it continues.
And as administrator, also, Claudia not only prepares and sets up and takes down the labs and so on for third, fourth, and fifth grade twice a week around each week, but she also now acts as our official liaison to partner organizations like Mass Audible and Flying Cloud and Nature's Classroom and others. And so that's a lot of time as well, and managing those relationships and keeping in touch and making sure it's standards aligned and making sure they're in all buildings and stuff like that is a load off my shoulders as well, so I'm really grateful for.
My question also is to you, what have you heard from the other teachers? You said positive. What have you, as the administrator, seen?
Yes. So the majority of teachers, I haven't spoken to all teachers about it, are very much in favor of this model and are grateful for not only her instruction, but also her acting as a thought partner when it comes to designing lessons. Because although she's leading the third through fifth grade lessons, she then also acts as a co-planner with me too.
So that, interdisciplinary, are you helping them learn how they can incorporate, let's say, writing up, writing a skill, writing up the experiment?
I'm definitely not, but Ms. Mallory is, yeah.
And from my perspective, absolutely. We are actually in fifth grade just doing volume right now in math. And then we did a whole introduction into using graduated cylinders and measuring volume, and we had a whole conversation that was very authentic and very rich about how, why can't we use the, the same formula that we use to find the volume of a rectangular prism as we could when we're measuring liquid? And it just opened this whole conversation. Well, because liquid won't always be in the shape of, well, the kids came out with, liquid will change shape no matter where it's in. And so we need something that could grad, that could like a graduated cylinder to measure the liquid because it won't always be the shape of a rectangular prism. So that was, I mean, it seems basic, but it's actually pretty hard to think about here, Ted.
I think that a really important piece of this too is that we've really been trying to not only hear the voices of students, but also hear what will support faculty and staff. And so when we have our annual budget meetings, or we have curriculum meetings, or we're really listening to what they say they need, and when, when we're focusing on certain initiatives, we're hearing that they could use more support somewhere else. So this is a direct response to, hopefully, what, you know, so it's really nice to hear Jane say that they feel that, this was a direct response to that.
Which is great. And it was within our budget?
Correct.
Thank you so much. And I'd love to see, you're so excited.
I know, we really are. It's so much fun. The paper airplane thing was like a wonderful morning and...
Right, which paper was best?
Oh, I think they found the heavier the paper, that video was actually cut off on the end, but the heavier the paper, the further it went. And that was kind of different than they had all predicted. They thought that the right, regular, traditional one was. And they thought that it was 'cause they had to, they had to keep the paper airplane together with the paperclip. They thought the paperclip just weighed that light paper down so much. So that was, that was fun. And we did the sugar tea thing this morning, and it was so fun.
Pizza next time.
Pizza next time, right? It was cute, it was super cute.
And their public speaking skills, they don't have to wait to be seniors to do public speaking.
No, and I was trying to, because we, I think it was hard to say, like, try to get ahold of a student to come on fairly short notice to talk about it. So I was like, well, let's see if we get some videos. And those, one of them was my student, the other ones were either from fourth or from the other fifth grade classroom. And I had asked the parents if it was okay, so that was good. But they, you know, they wanted to talk about it, they were excited. They said, just tell me what you, you've been doing in science class.
That's great. So are you gonna add a science night to your math night?
Sure.
Yes, we are.
Why not? Actually, that would be an easier one.
Yes, now we're gonna be doing math night, science night, ELS night.
Yes, and art night.
And social studies night.
Okay. We're doing our, we're doing our... At the open class day, yes.
Thank you so much.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So we will, standing reports, be approved of the school committee minutes. Aside from if they're, you know, a little technical, I came up with a bunch of those words that need some work, I'll just send that to Michelle. All right? But anything substantive, if anyone has minutes?
Under the business manager's report is one of your notes, the roll call. I'm listed as not present. I was present and I voted yes.
Thank you for that correction. And then I just have a general question in that, where it, it says, you know, the minutes mean, it says via teleconference. Is that because the person who's doing the recording is, came in by teleconference? So then it should, we didn't do it via teleconference then?
No, it's just the heading that's been there, so we'll just take that.
Okay, thank you. All right. So we have, do we have a motion now to approve the minutes? Anybody? Thank you, Nancy.
Second.
And that was the second from Art. Okay. Let's go through on the minutes. Art?
Yes.
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
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 And by unanimous approval.
Kim?
Kim.
Oh, Kim, I'm sorry. Kim? And that was a yes. All right. Any received correspondence?
No, thank you.
Okay. And now we will turn to the student representative report.
Tim's had her hand up for some reason.
Oh, Kim?
No.
That's what I thought it was. That's what I thought it was.
Okay.
Chris has had his hand up for some reason.
I think we had a letter from Karen.
Nope, it's on the agenda lower.
Oh.
It's, it's.
Highlighted in the.
Highlighted in new business, yeah.
I'm on the wrong one.
Oh, okay. Oh, the original. We amended.
Hi, everyone. I'm Michaela Carpenter. I'm a senior, and I am the student rep for my grade. I want to start with the fact that I don't wear this normally, or Mr. Carpenter in the back there. We, this week is spirit week. We did theme days, so today's tourist day, so I tried my best. We have our pep rally on Friday, which I hear a lot of people are really excited for this year, which is always fun for me. So, we, last time I was here, I was talking to you guys about student council and how we hadn't voted yet. High school did the campaigning the past two weeks, and last week, beginning of this week, the beginning of this week, we voted during lunch, and we got told yesterday who was on each student council for each grade. So that's exciting. Each grade is planning to meet really soon, and we also have to have our big group meeting too with Ms. Scott. And then, middle school campaigning starts shortly behind ours. Just, we gotta get ours going first. So on that. We also had a guest speaker today. I want to speak about him a little bit. His name is The Machine, Dr. Jesse Green. Love that name, it's great. He's a chainsaw artist. He was the star of American Chainsaw, which is on National Geographic. He came here and was very good. He told us to, he had the message of overcoming adversity, following our dreams no matter what, and choosing things, things in life that make us happy. He kept emphasizing the like, the dream big and big things will happen, which I thought was really cool. We haven't had a guest speaker in a little, a little while, and I've been around for a couple of them. But I really liked him. He was really good. Within the hour that he was here, I, like, he like changed my life. It was great. I also just want to say about him, I had to go to a meeting right after it, and I was a little upset that I couldn't get a picture with him. So, he ended up staying, actually, twenty, or actually, I think it was almost an hour after, so I could get a picture with him. Which is really cool. And my, a lot of my, all of my peers that were in the room also went to take a picture with him. And then also the, we had, middle schoolers and high schoolers were down there in the tack pack, and the middle schoolers were having a blast with him. All of them screaming, standing up, applauding him every second, and he was loving it. And literally right after, like, he was signing autographs for, I wasn't there, but people were still coming out when I went. And I had been at a meeting for forty minutes, so I thought that was pretty cool, that they were really involved within it. It was also cool just to see, like, how he spoke to us. He did say that he speaks to kids from like, literally kindergarten to seniors. And just like, the approach that he had was really cool, and I thought that was something I should talk to you guys about, so.
What was cool about the approach?
He, he spoke in, like, he showed his television personality, which was super cool. He like changed, changed voices. I was like, whoa. I got stepped back a little bit. I was not ready for that. But he, he just, he was very, he, we had a Q and A at the end. That was like forty minutes long, because all of the middle schoolers wanted to know everything about him, which was great. And he was very patient with people too, when they were asking questions that he couldn't hear. We had to say it again, because, I mean, middle schoolers don't have the loudest voices. And he was, he was just like, very like, knew what he was talking about, and was very passionate about what he does. And he told us, like, he didn't have the perfect childhood, and he is now like, you know, pretty cool to be a chainsaw artist. So, just showing that anything you dream of can happen if you try your hardest.
I'm sorry, Nancy, answer.
I was gonna ask the same question.
Oh.
Why was it so cold?
Okay, do you have anything else for us? I have a question. What's, is there anything going on among the students who are eligible to vote? Anything to encourage them to vote?
For the school, student council?
Talking on the November elections.
No, I mean, there's not, not much that we've talked about at all.
Not yet.
Yeah.
Not yet, come.
Yeah, I know that a lot of our, sorry for jumping in.
No, you're good.
I know a lot of our social studies and history teachers have it on the agenda to, with the upcoming election, to make sure students are aware, and if they haven't registered themselves, to make sure that happens. You know, but I think a lot of them are waiting to get a little closer, so that there's the urgency of making sure they're registered and things like that, so.
And is there any way to make sure that those who are eligible get the information?
That's our goal, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll be eligible. I got like, a week after it's my birthday, my eighteenth, so. Of course, I don't even have. No, we did, we talked about it at the end of last year. The teachers were like, make sure you're registered, make sure you're ready to go, and know what you're, who and what you're voting for, so.
Thank you, Ms. and Mr. Carpenter.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Mac.
And you guys look cool. All right. Do we have any public comment? Okay, business manager's report. Mr. Business Manager? Is he muted?
Uh, he is.
Are you here? You okay?
Yes.
Now you can.
Hey, I was trying to see if I can put my video camera on. I apologize. I have difficulty with my camera. There we go.
There it is.
Perfect. All righty. Good evening, everyone. Thank you. So we, I have before you this one warrant that I'm asking the committee to vote on. It's a vendor warrant. We don't have a payroll warrant for this particular period. But as you can see there in the notes, it's just various expenses that we've incurred over a couple of weeks.
Okay, I will entertain the motion.
So moved.
Nancy is so moved, and I heard Art second that. All right. Any questions? Seeing none. Kim, we'll start with you. Uh, you're muted.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes.
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 And yes. Okay. Anything else you need to let us know of?
Not really, other than I'm sure Beth could share with you that we met, Beth met with myself and a colleague of mine this morning, and we're meeting again tomorrow, just with the idea of cleaning up FY24, making sure that we have our end of the year report in, as well as looking at, you know, our FY25 budget, some areas and how we're doing. So, just wanted to let you know that's work that's ongoing, and that's work that's being completed in consultation with Beth.
Thank you. All right. We have anything, business with district member towns?
We do not.
Okay. Chairman's report. I will go through a couple of things. As you all know, we received a letter from Renee Wood. She knew that it was too late to take her name off the ballot, but she's withdrawing, has, as a candidate. She'll obviously still be getting votes, but she wanted all of us to do whatever we can, either in our publications, or contacts, et cetera, to let people know, please don't waste your votes by, she's not going, she can't accept it, and she backed all of us.
She also received a letter and a note, and she had her.
Yeah, it's in the. Yeah, exactly. And she will continue to follow up with that. In terms of the Providence trip, Rhode Island, it, Art is, has said that he will be joining us, and we will have all three of our slots.
Great.
And that's for the seventeenth and eighteenth.
Eighteenth.
Of October, yeah.
Of October, the night after, the day after candidate's night. All right. I just read this today, and having just heard what Charles was speaking about with his team, I have to get the details, but this is from the state, from Massachusetts Cultural Council. There is for schools five thousand dollar grant, so we could apply for, for both Mount Everett and for the elementary school for any, a special event.
Five thousand each?
Yeah, it says school, so it doesn't say district. I just got it in an email today. So I'm going to get the additional information, but I'm sure that both our schools would want to apply, I hope.
I just.
Yeah, it's for a speaker.
As soon as you can send it, if I haven't seen it. I didn't see it.
Well, I got it because I'm on the Chevy Cultural Council, so that's the only reason. So I hope, I will follow up and get that for you. Okay. And then, December, two things now with Liz LeFond, which I finally tracked down. One, she, they are going to do our policy manual. I'm not gonna go through all the details, unfortunately. Carl is not here, but I really think, save a lot of money, because we're already using MASC for our policy. But what they do is, she will, she, Liz LeFond is actually the person who will come to us. Policy will have to agree to meet on a regular basis, so we block that off, and they don't get knocked out of other dates once a month. And she said she thinks it could be done within about a year and a half. Because the last time we did this was 2013. So a lot has changed, and all of those policies we've been getting at home are not incorporated. So it will be a case where she will, the first thing they will do is MASC will do a comparison with the current policies, and they have a person who will take, since our, our policy manual is already in their system, they will go through and check whether maybe discrepancies are no policy, et cetera. So it will eliminate, we won't have to be going through six hundred and, seven hundred pages. And she said, in the beginning, it will probably be easier, because you're doing the very basics of school committee and school district. We will have a contract. I received the contract, but there is a discrepancy between what Glenn Koocher originally gave me as a price and what I see here. So I think it's because there, she sent two different versions of the contract. But she will come out and meet on a regular basis, so it's not, not having her in person. And I, I think it will be quite good, and I want the policy committee, obviously, to take the lead on this. Unfortunately, Carl actually had a legal case in New York State, so he let me know he couldn't make tonight's meeting. But we'll work it through, hopefully, really quickly. Also, she and Glenn Koocher, we're trying to confirm, will both come for our December seventh retreat. And we're, and we'll have to, we'll work it with people here having, so we just block all of that up. Glenn gets to do two of his favorite things. The, oh, I didn't think of that. The Lee Mall.
Yep.
And the fish restaurant right on the corner on Main Street, whose name escapes me right now. That's another favorite thing.
Sam and mine.
You got it. All right. So I've lined, that's all lined up. I just want to go through a couple of other things. Kyle, this is for you, and for Jim. Edgemont was interested in hearing about our plans for building on campus and wanted to meet with both of you guys. It, I just, Jim contacted me, and then I discussed with, it's premature, but we'd love to meet with her, so everybody's in the same place. So let's, we'll follow up, but we don't want her to think that, or really want to think that we're ignoring that we just want to have accurate information go out. Don't think that there's gonna be a condominium, you know, the corner versus School Road next week. The last is, and I think it's gonna be a big part of what we're going through in December, is protocols related to the school committee. Unfortunately, hearing that there are people who might have been speaking after the executive session outside of campus, outside of us, we have to be so careful of that, and we could easily be cited so by the Attorney General's office. You have to be very, very careful of not saying anything that we engaged in, in terms of executive session. Number one. Number two, the issue that came up regarding discipline and the handbook. So we have Carl and Art, I think you went on that, and Kim, and I related to the discipline section of the handbook. Were you the third person? No. Stephanie, were you? No. I have to look back at my notes. On that, that whole area, that's really the purview of our administrators. Anything that we would do would be so that the school committee could better understand what the issues are, and they could bring it up. We don't get to alter. We get to approve. We get to read all of the material. We can bring it up at any time in terms of speaking to the superintendent where you have questions or issues. But that committee, and I'm only bringing this up also because I saw there was a further exchange through emails. The only reason for setting this up is to facilitate the questions that might come up, so that it does not cause a procedural or a legal issue. We have our administration. They are in charge of the policies. Obviously, we get to ask our questions. We get to bring up issues and any issues that somebody might have. But we can't be discussing that online, and we should not be discussing it with any member of the community, only because of the fact that we were going beyond what the protocol is of school committee members. So that's as nicely as I could put it. I know it gets very passionate with a number of people, and there's no reason not to, but we have to understand everything that we show in terms of what we do with curriculum for students. It's also true for behavior. Every child is not stamped out of the same design. And we have to trust the decisions that are made through the administration. So please, this is just a way of saying. So please, this is just a way of saying, be careful. Um, alright, and please, I don't know who's going to MASC. I know Carl is.
I mean, they had to respond to Michelle so that we could.
Oh, do you, do you know who's going to MASC November, Papa?
I know Carl is, I think, I'm pretty sure Kim is. You are, I think there's four of you that are going.
Oh, okay.
Right, we can't come this year.
Uh, okay. And the other thing our curriculum will do when we get to that committee. So yes, that's the chairman's report.
Okay.
Any questions, any comments?
Just a question.
Okay.
She has a question.
Just a question about, and maybe you're gonna address this for the candidate forum, is that?
Tac tac. Tac tac.
No, but I mean in terms of planning. I mean, are, because we'd have it as a conversation, it's in the, in the um, community outreach.
So we're just following up on the direction that was given to us there, so.
Mm-hmm.
Um, yeah, I, I think it's exactly, going exactly as we talked about in the community outreach, so.
Mm-hmm, and Mr. Carpenter has students and departments involved in the kind of preparation, so.
Yep.
It's in good hands.
We're actually, we're actually working on the flyer now.
Mm-hmm, okay, superintendent's report.
Okay, so um, I'm gonna keep it short because we had lots of visitors. You can see that we've had a lot going on since I saw everybody formally two weeks ago. Um, I did put in my Monday notes that the, uh, we had our, our follow-up meeting with the um, solar company um, to um, actually have, it went live August twenty-third, but to kind of do the handoff from um, the planning and development people to um, the people who will monitor it as it moves forward. So I tried to put the link, I hope it worked, I tested it, it looked like it worked. So you can actually see, we're gonna put it on the website somewhere, so people can see um, how our solar production is going um, from uh, day to day. And there's a lot of interesting statistics that are on that. Um, so now that means that we're actually producing energy and it's, it's offsetting our bill of costs, so we're all for those, those things. So um, that happened. Um, we're actively meeting to prepare for the legislative visit that will happen in November. I'm still um, in the early planning stages and we have different um, subcommittee groups um, from either superintendent's roundtable or internal, um, before we give everyone the full details. But um, we're actively planning that and um, we have some um, very exciting visitors who are going to be joining us and I'm waiting for a couple more um, responses before I reveal the whole, the whole group that's coming, so. I think it's gonna be a great event and again, we're gonna be looking to have that be student-led in a lot of ways. So we're looking forward to that. Um, I've had the opportunity to do lots of classroom walkthroughs um, at the secondary and elementary level and we'll keep doing that on a weekly basis. Um, but it's been um, really great and engaging in, in the classrooms and there's just, as you can see, lots of energy um, that the students have and it's, it's really nice because um, we get to see it and we feel it and we talk about it on a regular basis, but when other people come into the district, they're finding the same thing, so that's really um, something we're proud of. Um, we had our first uh, internal district safety meeting, so um, the team is up and running and everybody has their tasks and that's with our community partners. Um, we will be um, working and, we'll be coming in December in executive session as we've done in the past to provide an update to the school committee around um, uh, safety and security and um, so that'll be on our December meeting schedule. Yesterday was the first Mass Association of School Business Officials um, all-day training uh, in Holyoke for once. I didn't have to go all the way to Boston, so that was exciting. Um, and uh, lots of relevant PD real-time um, panels and um, tangible um, research and strategies that can be applied uh, for a variety of issues um, coming up. And um, I also had um, the pleasure, I went out to um, I, I crossed with Nick um, and went to LA, uh, through LAX anyway, to the NASS um, conference last week, whirlwind thirty-six hours. Um, but I did have an opportunity to, even though I didn't win my category, um, it was a, a really awesome experience and I'll take one and six in the nation, so. Um, but uh, even better was the um, connections and the collaboration with other districts and um, people who really wanted to hear about the innovative things that we're doing in a small um, school district uh, out here. And I was the only person from Massachusetts, so that was really neat. Um, and made some amazing connections and um, got to meet Stephen Covey, who um, his latest um, book is on Trust and Inspire and had a, a real opportunity to um, think about uh, leadership from a new lens and work with other colleagues across the nation and it was, it was really uh, great, so I'm very grateful for that opportunity. That's all I have for now.
On the day you're having the education department people.
Mm-hmm.
As soon as you even pick the date, just so that the school committee members who might want to adjust their calendars to be here.
Yes.
Thanks, thank you. Thank you for being willing to do that amount of travel and that time.
Yep.
And get a five-hour delay, so you couldn't pick up your car and then be hanging out.
I will say, it was very, a very conscious Uber driver who said, are you sure? It's middle of the day, you sure you want me to drop you off here? And I thought, oh boy.
Yeah.
So, in Boston, are you sure? And I'm thinking, aren't we near the airport, like, should I be scared? But um, anyway, it was fine, it was fine.
Okay, any questions for Beth? Yes, sir.
When they come, is that a half-a-day thing, hours, all day?
It's hours, um, so that's why I haven't said anything formally yet. Um, it's somewhere or in the two-hour mark. Um, and I just, we're chatting with the administrative team, but I think there's going to be an opportunity to maybe host a breakfast for some people before, you know, and.
Okay.
And, you know, maybe some things afterwards, so my guess is it'll be a morning that um, people may wanna make themselves available. Um, so I just want to confirm a few more people and then we started today, literally plotting out the schedule and we have to be very thoughtful about this so that they can see everything and still have um, the opportunity. I, all I can say is the um, commissioner is um, excited and confirmed and he um, is actually going to use my office because he doesn't wanna miss anything. He was gonna have to leave to go to something else. So he said if I can find a space, you know, to run my next meeting for two hours, I'll stay. So I said, you betcha, you have it, so. Um, so I'm, I, I think it's gonna be a really exciting day. We're looking forward to um, sharing the details as soon as we know just a little bit more. But it's in November, so.
It's great news. About there, it's a day.
It does, it's no, it's in November.
Okay, thank you very much, and Julie?
Well, as you remember, we have lots of exciting and innovative things going on um, curriculum-wise, but I don't feel like I really need to speak to it because Lindy spoke to it and our trans and friends and our teacher and our principal and we did have our subcommittee meeting for the first, at the beginning of this week, which you all will speak to, so I won't waste anybody's time.
Well, I'm going to thank you again for, I know Nancy will also, but that I gained so much more insight into the thoughtful planning that is integrating the curriculum from pre-K through twelve. I mean, it really seems there is no longer what used to exist, this breakdown that, that Mr. Carpenter doesn't wind up getting a surprise where these children sa- sign their letter of intent, which I, but so few. It's, I think it's so important and the insight you gave, I hope you get to present it to all of us. Gives you a real understanding of a thought that's gone on in, in the family.
For that, for sure.
Most definitely.
Oh my God, Geek Central is great.
I think it's very worthy to find, like, fellow curricular geeks.
Yeah.
The four of us was like, what about, what about, what?
It was good, it was fun.
Thank you, and thanks for, I mean, it's exciting to see.
I will definitely say I'm a curriculum nerd. Turning to Sandy.
Hi, good evening. Um, I wanna kind of focus on one thing tonight and I have focused on it many times. You've heard me talk about social, emotional learning and mental health. Um, it is something we are focusing on here, continue to focus on. And um, we, you've been very supportive of all of the um, work that we've been doing and we've added staffing, as you know, and we're doing programming to really address not only individual student needs, um, but also groups of children and also families. So we today had our first Improving Attendance Task Force meeting and that really coincides um, with some of that work because we're talking about students who are chronically absent, largely, but absenteeism in general. Chronically absent children are out more than ten percent of the year. And we do have, we found in Mount Everett last year, about twenty-one percent of our students were chronically absent. And at the elementary level, it was about fourteen or fifteen percent. And we were talking, it was a group of us talking, and I was very appreciative of the people who came today um, about what that means, what that looks like, what can help. I participated in a webinar, a national webinar last week and they talked about all of the things that we're currently actually trying to implement on a regular basis. You know, um, relationship building, offering services in collaboration with local agencies, um, just other programming that we can do here in the building, conducting the universal mental health screenings, um, identifying students, um, and then providing support. So um, I want to encourage people to get that word out there. Our next meeting is going to be October twenty-fourth at four-thirty, we have decided. Food and childcare is a great thing to add in, so we're going to work on having that happen. And um, we are going to work on a survey too, to get out to families to see how we can help in other ways. And I really want to, we had a couple of our mental health professionals at the meeting today and we're going to reach out to some others who have been very supportive of us. And while I was sitting here tonight, somebody from Desi wrote to me and said, there's a grant you wanna look into that could really benefit our district, as a rural district, in collaborating with other, again, local agencies and how we can continue to increase our support. So I'm gonna be looking into that uh, right away to see how that might benefit us and um, get working on that. But I just wanted to put that out there, it's still a concern. Um, you need to know that it is, um, the absenteeism and all the mental health and social, emotional needs that are impacting students and families are, are something that we continue to look at all of the time and how we can improve and offer supports. And we're in a tough spot down here in a lot of ways, but we have resources here that people that come here regularly, Dr. Hoff, our own internal staff, Dr. Larman who comes in, um, they really go above and beyond in making sure that we're linked up with the right people. And then our partnership with the local pediatricians offices as well, so. I just need to put that out there, like, what a benefit that's been to us. Um, it's just increased our ability to address the needs, so wanted to put that out, out there to you. Um, Improving Attendance Task Force, if you can uh, get that word out, we're going to be sending out flyers and communicating that with families during open houses.
And you said the next meeting was October twenty-fourth?
It's the, it's the school committee meeting night, we decided that kind of made sense for a while.
What time?
We're gonna do four-thirty to five-thirty, but again, trying to offer some um, incentives.
You're gonna be on Improving Attendance Incentives.
Yeah.
I apologize, I was gonna walk in and say, I'm an attendance program. But I was sorry.
People were like, I'll make pumpkin bread and pumpkin pie. We're like, these are all good things, they're all out there.
Right. I just, you know, it's interesting because I was listening to several times the news today and they said, all the statistics that came out, and I wanna see what we look like in terms of how they're realizing that the pandemic continues to impact in so many ways.
Yes.
And it's not as if the numbers are bouncing back in terms of assessments. This was, this was the Massachusetts one, and there was someone nationally speaking about the issues, uh, mostly on social, emotional.
Right.
So, and you know, it's targeted to the teachers, the students, it's, it's.
Right.
It really is shaping our society.
Things have completely changed, really.
So, so thank you very much, I'll be on time.
Awesome, thank you.
Better come with a bread.
Come with a bread. Or something, I was actually gonna mix it.
Is he having apple most?
I, I was.
He's having apple.
Yeah, I was actually gonna go into the dentist's offices to um, pay us. Um, alright, new business.
So we have um, the, I think what um, Sandy was referring to. We have a, a, another pre-K school choice um, student that we need a vote of the committee to accept, that's in the packet.
And if, this is someone who, where you.
We have gone through, right, that's why it's here, yeah. I think we just need, is the letter in here or do we?
I don't think so.
Is this the one from last?
Um, this is, well, this, we had. It's a different family. Um, but they met the same qualification, same, um, so there is a letter.
Yes.
That was received in our office, it's not in the packet, but um, the point that's on here is that means that they have gone through the review process at all levels and that um, we have the space where the student, do you wanna speak more specifically?
Sure, the parents um, have actually, two older children have choiced into the district and um, they actually wanted their pre-K child to come here to Undermountain. We don't have a space available here at Undermountain, but um, I spoke with her and we offered a study in Marlboro, but we do have a space because a student had dropped out and um, they weren't sure that they wanted it, then they decided they did and they, they wrote a letter to us and expressed their, you know, extremely interest in it.
Alright, so I will accept a motion to accept a student into a pre-K on school choice.
Second.
Thank you to the dynamic duo. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Nancy?
Yes.
Kim? Yeah, she's off right now.
There she goes.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, Kyle?
Yes.
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 And I'm a yes. Okay, moving on.
Let me get our updates.
Subcommittee reports. I like that.
I love it.
Okay, Sarah.
No, please.
Community relations public school advocacy.
Jito. Working on the newsletter.
Policy Subcommittee. Carl's not here, I basically had given the, so, nothing else. Uh, personnel negotiations, we haven't begun, but we love the.
Mm-hmm.
Um, building grounds, technology.
Haven't met, I would like to meet.
Please do.
I will.
Alright, I'll set you up with the building.
Yeah.
And ground people. Yeah, we will, we can.
Okay. Uh, Kim? On the Superintendent's Evaluation Subcommittee?
Nothing.
Okay, Kim, what, well, um, one of the things that Liz Lefond suggested.
Nothing at this time, sorry.
Okay. Liz Lefond suggested and the committee would have to agree to, but she thought that we should deal with our goal-setting, the school committee goal-setting in that committee.
Say that again.
That the, the school committee is supposed to have our goals set by now for the year. The place that it should go for discussion, not to come up with everything, but to sort of be the guiding light on our goals. Um, Liz Lefond said it would be, probably be easiest to put it into the Superintendent's Evaluation Subcommittee because our goals should be acting in concert with Beth's goals. So just take that into consideration, we feel a little better, we could possibly discuss it and how, if you wanna handle it that. We would possibly discuss it and how, if you want to handle it that way.
Sure.
Sure. Okay. Executive Minutes Review.
Nothing.
Um, no, Carl said he knows he has to do, do that because there are a few at this point. Kim, you have anything in terms of warrant?
No, there was none.
Okay. Curriculum Subcommittee. Do you want to add anything to what's already been said? Done. So, thank you again.
Anytime.
Anytime. Okay. Um, MASC, we'll let Carl tell us what he has. Uh, Kyle, anything from the little Lefon?
No, updates from me.
Okay. Uh, childhood, early childhood?
No, I should probably, I didn't do anything last year, so it's been a couple years. I should probably try and send something up.
Okay, uh, liaison to Southern Children's Childcare. Um, I think it's up, Sandy, if you think we have to at some point do an update, I think we should.
Yes, I, I, I agree. We've been talking a little bit about that.
Right. All right. So we'll do that. Uh, anything with the community health advisory? No?
No.
All right. And everybody's.
Not at this time.
Ev- every, everybody knows because you sent it out through one of your newsletters or, or, and I think the principals as well, that there are sixteen dates that have been set up for COVID and flu shots.
Oh, October sixteenth is the time, day, yeah.
At our, is it there?
Well, that's the one here, so, yeah.
Right. Yeah. I guess you don't have to have all sixteen.
I hope not. I hope not.
All right.
I'm not going to go sixteen times. Oh, Art has a question.
Yes?
Uh, is there only going to be one date or is there going to be only one date here?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
But it's like so easy to get them now.
Yeah. No, it's fine.
Okay. Um, regional agreement review, I said we're going to wait for that until after the election. And future agenda items. Uh, executive session not needed. All right, who wants, you guys worked so hard. Which one do you want? Second! Okay.
Nicely done.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you. Would you like to start the voting?
Yes.
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 And Kim?
Yeah.
And Bonnie, yes. All right. Thank you all.